Call to order, the October 13, 2014, Latrobe City Council Meeting, please stand and pledge allegiance.
I am the United States of America, and in this republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I ask for a moment of silence to give thanks, ask for guidance, or to quietly relax. Thank you, Ms. Buck. [S01] Welcome.
Mr. Devin Angelo?
Here.
Mrs. Smith?
Here.
Mrs. Caldwell-Brayner?
Here.
Mr. Sepora?
Here.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Here.
Ms. Deezie?
Mayor Wolf.
Here. May I have approval of the minutes from the September 8th and September 22nd meetings, please?
I move the minutes of the September 8th and the September 22nd, 2014 meetings to be approved and accepted, and be permitted to remain on the secretary's desk where they will be available for reading and inspection to anyone.
May I have a second, please?
I second the motion.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. May I have approval of the fiscal department reports and paid bills for the month of September 2014?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any questions or discussions?
Ms. Buck, the bills that are being paid, any of them unbudgeted items or outside of scope of budget?
No, everything for September was budgeted items, and we did pay the glaze here, they found that our audit finished, so $10,000 came out for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. At this time, I want to read a proclamation, as most of you know, tomorrow is the annual Chamber of Commerce Dinner, and this year's community recipient award is going to Doc Giffen. The city of Latrobe will be presenting to him a proclamation that reads, "In recognition of his significant and substantial public service to the greater Latrobe community through its life, I, Rose Maria Wolford, Mayor of the city of Latrobe, do hereby extend to Doc Giffen the gratitude and thanks of the council and citizens of the city of Latrobe, and do further declare that October 14, 2014, shall now and hereafter be known and designated as Doc Giffen Day, issued under the great seal of the city of Latrobe this 13th day of October 2014." At this time, we have our citizens' requests, we ask that these be related to the items on the agenda only at this time, and then we'll have time later in the meeting to talk in an open forum, and I ask that you limit your time to three to five minutes, state your name and address when you come to the microphone.
James Miller, 147 East, 4th Avenue in Latrobe. I have a question on the paid bills. We had a bill, $44,000, on the statement up there, I was just wondering what that was for?
Do you have the date or who the check is to?
To the city of Latrobe.
Was it a check made out to us from someone else or paid up?
No, that's what it said.
Oh, it's paid to the city of Latrobe.
The payroll?
No.
Is it a check paid to the city or by the city given?
It stated it was paid to the city of Latrobe.
Paid to, okay, so it's a receipt.
Are you looking at the date on there? Because our payroll deposit is written out to the city of Latrobe.
BLPA is the number. Council Payable Check.
Yeah, that's...
That might...
That's the check that we write out to deposit in the commercial bank for the payroll deposit.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
On the agenda, we have authorization for the sort of grid age resolution reducing the parking permit discount to zero. I'm just wondering why?
Go ahead.
Currently, that is a 35 percent, which is creating issues where the parking authority's not collecting enough revenue to reimburse the city for their costs, so that needs to be addressed.
I'm just wondering if they make it zero if everybody, they're going to get a huge influx of permits for parking?
It affects, it only affects certain individuals that get the discount now, but it's going to, hopefully it will help the parking authority meet their expectations.
Also on the agenda is the authorization to purchase 19-millimeter 3x7 electronic message center. Is that for the outside on the building itself?
It'll be on the corner of the lot, and it's paid for by Comcast donation.
Oh, Comcast is paying for it?
Well, this is, Comcast get a donation, and that's being used paper sign.
Fantastic, thank you. One other item, I'll speak to a later customer, it's on the agenda. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Anyone else like to speak, please?
Any issue?
Yes. Oh, okay, yeah, well, on the agenda, yeah.
My name is Florence Pluta, I live at 321 Northview Drive. Previously, we had permit parking only signs on our short street.
Excuse me, can you talk closer to the mic or louder? I couldn't make out the name or the address.
My name is Florence Pluta, 321 Northview Drive. I live on a very short street, three houses on one side facing the street, four on the other. Across from me is always blocked with parked cars. They are related to 314 Northview Drive, and they are also employed at what, Latrobe Hospital, because they walk down, go through the parking lot, go to work. It is an obstruction for me to get out. On one occasion, there were 19 cars on that short street parked, another occasion, 21 cars where I could not get out of my driveway, and it was all related to this one house, 314. I don't want to cause any problems. I want permit parking signs placed back on the street like they were years ago. They replaced them with watch children's signs. Watch children, they're not being watched by their parents, because the children have skateboards coming off the people's driveways, the neighbors' driveways, their bicycles off the neighbors' driveways onto the street, their bicycles around my house. I guess I'm a mean old lady.
You know.
I don't say anything other than go out and I give them a dirty look, and they dissipate.
I have a question, these cars that are parked there, they're not all residents of that address?
No, no.
They're parking there and walking to the hospital, is that you?
And they're relatives. They don't park in the driveway of 314 Northview. I counted, there's one car garage that you go into, and in that area, two cars, and three cars coming out to the street. They don't have to park on the street to obstruct traffic.
Do they work at the hospital?
Pardon?
Do they work at the hospital?
I see them walking down to the hospital, and they don't come back till the afternoon.
Okay.
I'm at, on Joanne Drive, at 65, 75, 83, Joanne Drive, they have permit parking signs only, and it's on a curb, they were never taken away when ours were taken away. I stopped and asked somebody one day, what does it cost for permit parking? I don't know, anybody parks there. So, you know, I don't know.
Rose, I remember when we put in the way, there was a reason the hospital wasn't charged into parking garage anymore, and the hospital staff got to be so small, they weren't parking for people's residence homes.
Right, we had the same issue over in Diford one time, we put up parking signs there because people were parking there in front of residents' homes. We'll have our Public Works Director who's on vacation today, and our Chief of Police look into it, right Wayne?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll show you my driveway, the apron, there's a sinkhole. Ten years ago, they fixed the street, they left an indent. When it rains, or it's de-iced and rained, it all comes down my driveway. Right now, they have it chopped off, and there is a hole, they tarred it, and there's a hole, they're going to fix it, but they better raise the apron of my street, so no more water comes down my driveway.
We'll have a look at that too, but I got one of those sinkholes in front of my house too, so. Pardon me? Yeah, right, right, we'll look, we'll look at that too, ma'am.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Just for...
Well, actually, no, we're going to go to the agenda, and then we'll get to the open items later that aren't on the agenda. I'm sorry about that. Okay, committee reports, finance committee, Madeline Mike, anything right now?
Nothing to report yet, but I know Madeline and I have been reviewing the potential budget as prepared by Wayne for us, and formulating some good questions to pose towards him, so we'll keep working at it, and hopefully have something for next month to present.
Thank you. Public Safety, Jerry?
Yeah, we have a Neighborhood Watch Meeting next Monday at 6:30 here, which we hope to somehow elect officers to get the hierarchy settled, and go to home captains, and from there, we'll work on block captains. So, if you know any, I have some packets over there, if anybody is interested, or anybody knows anybody who's interested, there's a sign-up sheet in there, there's a little press release, there's a little book, and there's an envelope, you can either mail your application back in, or you can bring it to here, and I'll get it. That's next Monday night at 6:30 here. Refreshments will be served.
Public Works, Jerry, Madeline, anything?
No.
Okay.
I do know that I had spoken with Joe Buck getting out, and he's not here, that's right.
No, he's on vacation.
But he went over to Seven Thaw, and picked that studio pretty nice, and everybody's trying to get there. They gave him a job.
When's that, when was that open house, did they have it already, or did they?
Yeah, they have it.
Yeah, it was out last week, last Wednesday, yeah, I was out with him. Okay, Community Development Committee, Megan, Tricia?
Something to report.
Did I skip the Personnel Committee, I'm sorry, I did. Personnel Committee. Tricia?
I have nothing.
Okay, okay. Now, Community Development, Tricia? Still nothing.
Did we hear anything on the hiring of a mechanic?
I received three, I'm out of state tonight, received three resumes of how qualified this is. Hopefully we'll get one.
Is there anybody visiting with him?
No, no one visiting with him.
Board of Authority reports, I don't think we have anything. I don't see anybody here from any of them.
Anne here.
Anne, you haven't, well, that, I mean, departments, departments, I'm talking board of authority, Latrobe Municipal Authority, zoning hearing board, planning commission, civil service commission. One thing I will say about the Latrobe Municipal Authority, I talked to some council members here, I think we're going to wait until January's meeting to appoint someone to the Water Authority, simply because if we appoint someone now, that appointment expires at the end of January anyway, so we'd have to reappoint someone actually in February. So, it kind of doesn't make sense to do that twice, so.
Why can't we have some reports from the boards?
Well, I do know that some of the boards, I know we get a report in our packet from Park and Rec about their meetings.
That's usually separate from the packet. Whenever Park and Rec gives them to me, I'll send them out for...
But they're in our mailboxes, we get them monthly.
Right, unless their meetings are canceled.
I think the zoning hearing board doesn't meet that often.
Right, they don't meet, because the parking authority is every quarter, and sometimes they do submit their minutes.
The industrial development, they only meet once a year anyway.
Right, they only meet once a year, and I think we only hear from them if there's something to report. I know they meet every month.
Who's to go between?
Ellevan and us.
He used to be Richard Jim, because he was on council, and he reports the active mainly important boards.
Well, my dad used to come to meetings, but he doesn't come since he has this problem. I don't know that there's ever been one. I guess this really just...
It's been Richard for a long time.
Yeah, it has been Richard for a long time.
But Richard's...
Yeah, it wasn't by design, I mean, it was...
No, no, it's a bunch of them.
We need to talk to them and see if they'd be willing to at least submit their minutes if they can't come. Department reports, Joe's not here, where is everybody tonight? Joe's on vacation, where's the chief?
The...
Okay. Okay, Chief Brazili? Haven't seen you for a while, nice to have you back, you got the floor.
Thanks. I was here last month, yeah.
Yeah, you were.
About hockey stories. Just to report, we had our annual fire prevention week, and it was deemed a huge success. We had the Red Cross there, and we distributed through the different neighborhoods in, within the city, the community, 100, well, 1,000 of these door hangers. Right now, as of tomorrow, I talked to Michael Felice, who is the director over at the Red Cross, picking up 100 smoke detectors. People are signing up for these things, they did sign up for some of them. Hopefully, the door hangers will get more, but this is the form we use, these will be downstairs, at the fire department, the watch desk, the full timers, you can pick them up there if you want to sign up for a free smoke detector, and then if you need it installed, there's times, signed personnel who will be installing them, which will be the fire department. I can leave some of these up at the city office if you'd like to.
That'd be great.
He has 100 for me tomorrow, and he said if we need more, he can get me more, but we're going to start with 100. We distributed 1,000 door hangers throughout parts of First Ward, well, pretty much all through town, but we hit the most critical areas where they were high-risk areas, so... But this was one of the things we partnered with the Red Cross to do, and it seemed to be very successful, so if anybody does need a smoke detector, we'll leave some of these at the city office, and then downstairs at the fire department watch desk.
Is there any requirements?
None. Just, the only thing is, I need these back, if they take them, I'm going to need these back, because we have to keep record with the Red Cross, how many were missed, so... Yeah, if they come in, they'll not, leave them here, and I'll pick them up, and put them in my mailbox, if you'd like me to, I can get them there. But, yeah, just something, something good for the community.
Thanks, Chief, appreciate that, you all ready for Halloween?
We're ready.
Okay. Anne, anything?
I have very important calls.
Thank you. Mr. Kelly?
There I am. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, the first item appears under the Administration Finance Department, it is a motion, excuse me, the motion reads, "I move we authorize the solicitor to repair the necessary resolution to amend Chapter 256, Vehicles and Traffic, Section 25658, Permit Parking Rates, to reduce the resident discount for any permit passed from 35 percent discount to 0 percent discount." That's the motion.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Do I hear a second?
Oh, second it.
Any questions or discussion? I have some. I'd like to give the residents some kind of a discount, if you live in town, I think 35 percent is a lot, but I still think there should be some benefit, because, you know, they are paying taxes in town, and so I was thinking maybe it could be like a 10 percent instead of 35 percent? Does anybody have any?
I'm agreeing with that, I don't think we should take that discount to zero, but significantly reduce it from 35 percent. I think it still offers some incentive there, and I believe 10 percent's a good start. I agree.
So, can I make a motion to amend? Yes, I can, I know, I can. I'm going to make a motion to amend that to 10 percent. May I have a second, please?
And I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now we'll vote on the resolution.
We're not voting on the...
The amended resolution.
Well, there's no resolution yet, but the main motion, to reduce it from 35 percent to 10 percent.
Okay, and that's just a motion? Okay, so, all in favor of reducing it from 35 percent to 10 percent, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
The next item is a resolution, it's one that we have every year, approving the agreement with Westmoreland County Transit Authority, now therefore be resolved that the agreement covering the rural and urban mass transit service between the Westmoreland County Transit Authority and the city for the fiscal period ending June 30, 2015, calling for a total contribution from the city, the amount of $1,035, being the savings hereby approved, and Section 2 authorizes the mayor, city manager, and any other proper officer to take any action and sign any documents necessary to carry into effect this resolution. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
Oh, second.
Any questions or discussion?
What was the amount that we agreed to last year, if we recall?
975. This year is about 75, $80, I think, more than last year. It's gone up each and every year a hundred bucks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Buck?
This is Resolution 201454. Mr. Devin Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Sepora?
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell-Brayner?
Yes.
Mrs. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Paul Mary?
Yes.
Mayor Wolf.
As a member of the Westmoreland County Transit Authority Board, I will abstain.
There is five yes, one no.
The next item on the agenda is also a resolution, it is entitled, "Autorizing the Purchase of an Electronic Message Center." Whereas the electronic message center previously operated by the Latrobe Union and Youngstown Park and Recreation Department is no longer functional, whereas the city believes it would be in the best interest to have a new message center to distribute information to its residents, now therefore it resolves Section 1, that the council of the city of Latrobe hereby approves entering into a contract with RK Neon Company to purchase a 19-millimeter, 3-foot-by-7-foot electronic message center with non-illuminated identification sign, for a total cost for materials and installation of $16,794, and Section 2 authorizes the mayor, city manager, city secretary, and any other proper city officer to take any and all action and sign any and all documents necessary to carry into effect this resolution and the purchase of the sign. Now, the motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make the motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Any questions or discussion?
Yeah. Who's going to be...
The keeper of the sign?
The administration office.
The puppet master?
The, we will share, appreciably, with everyone, but we will be the ones to do the actual setting up of the sign.
It'll be where the sign is now, or?
No, it's going to be on the corner of the lot here, so that you can see it clearly at the red light, and even, you'll be able to see it if you run the van, you'll be able to see it very clearly, and it'll be an opportunity to advertise what's going on, crime watch and other issues that are going on with the city.
It's not going to be like on the building, it's going to be like in the ground.
Right, it's about 7 or 8 feet high, I believe.
Yeah, they're going to have it up pretty high, so that you can see it from far back, and it'll be, there'll be a little post that comes up on it.
Make sure, you check with the chief, and it's not obstructing anybody's vision at that corner.
If they want high enough, you're sitting down in a van or something, you can see. By the way, there's also an additional, we've got today, there's an additional $1,050 rebate on that, so.
Any other questions, Megan?
Yes, Wayne, is anybody allowed to advertise, like if you're going to your fire department's on that?
Yes, we talked about the firemen using it for the hockey sales and stuff like that, yeah, certainly. Now, this even cities, we talked to South Greensburg, and they advertise, a safe example, if you want to advertise that your son is having a birthday, they charge us a fee, they say happy birthday, whoever, and they take a few bucks off of it. The only comment I'm going to offer is, we ought to probably think about having a policy for usage of the sign, otherwise, anyone and everyone may have that opportunity, we have to be thinking about it.
Yeah, I mean, I think we can talk to, which is Greensburg?
Yeah, it was South Greensburg.
South Greensburg, and other municipalities, I'm sure have it, that, you know, other organizations want to advertise on it, that there's a fee associated with it, that maybe nonprofits, I don't know. But we, you're right, I agree, we need a policy, we probably don't have to reinvent the wheel, because there's probably some other municipalities we can pull from, what do you think?
There's a number of municipalities that are getting them, so, yeah, I'm sure that they kind of all look into that, so, yeah, we can certainly see what they have.
What's the target time for this thing?
As soon as possible.
Wayne, what's the...
They're going to advertise at Halloween for it.
What's the grand total to us after donation and what?
It is like $15,744, which is a little bit more, I mean, the Comcast was $16,500, so we still actually have additional donations to cover.
And no taxpayer dollars is coming, is that what your question was, how much does the city paying, or how much is the total cost? Okay.
The Comcast donation was for communication.
Right.
So, it's certainly in line with what they were intending to be used for.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question, Wayne, as you know, I came up with Solvadema, which I think would be a great asset for for our town, but, no, the $16,794, that's just for the one side, right?
That is, the $16,794 was the sign that we saw on this side of the truck.
So, we're not going to have it coming up, Jefferson, just?
No, that would be, that would be double, right.
Did they give you a price for both sides?
Well, they said that if you wanted to, both sides would double. They wouldn't do it.
Oh, it's definitely double. Oh, they want to get 50, 50.
No, we tried, we tried, I wanted, armlessly. I'll just offer a thought, you can approve this sign, unless we have to move extremely quickly, there may be some other entities that may want to consider donating, where we could have enough to do both sides, but I don't know how quickly we have to move on it. Well, I'd like to move on this way, but you know...
You can add to it, though, right? You can add the other sign if you get more money.
Yeah, it's actually, I mean, actually, their sign and software can run both sides, it's just the fact that there's additional cost, and it wasn't exactly, you said, when I was about, about $16,000, it wasn't a whole lot of people, so, there is the ability.
Kind of weird, I think you already have the technology.
Well, the technology was only $700, the rest was the sign.
But, I mean, I guess I don't understand why the other side would be the same amount.
Well, it's because of the pixels, and they're putting, they're panels.
Well, it's because of the pixels and everything they're putting in. They're panels.
They have two panels. It's basically, it's basically two signs. If you see one out in the community, that's just one sign.
So you will see it coming into a church community and coming from-
It's coming this way.
But I won't see it. It'll be like where the building is here, it'll be kind of angled like this. So he'll see it coming up this way. And we'll be able to see it because he said you can even be on those sideways and we did look at it and be able to tell what it says on it.
She won't be able to see it coming-
North.
We'll be able to see it coming north. We'll be able to see it coming up here from the north.
Okay.
Another question I have is do we remove the current sign that's non-functional?
Yes, that's coming down because it is non-functional. She's told me that she has no ability to repair it and it really would be hard to read even if it was working well anyway.
Crazy.
Any other questions? Ms. Buck?
This is resolution 201455. Mr. Jevon Angela.
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell Craigner.
Yes.
Mr. Ballmer.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Sephora.
Yes.
Mayor Wolpert.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, members of council, the next item is a resolution. It is, it's one that we do pass not every year, at least periodically. And it's authorizing disposition of public records set forth from a task schedules for disposition of the records of the office department in the city of LeChaux. Now therefore be resolved that the council of the city of LeChaux, in accordance with the municipal records manual, hereby authorizes the disposition of public municipal records set forth on schedule A, which is attached here too. Section two authorizes the city manager, city secretary, and any other city officer to take all action and sign all documents necessary to carry into effect this resolution. Section three states that the resolution shall become effective immediately. Section four that any and all other resolutions inconsistent with this one are hereby repealed. The motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined by the solicitor.
May I have, may I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Any questions?
I have a question. I may have asked this last year, but I may have forgotten. How do we dispose of these records?
If any of the records have social security numbers on or any kind of personal information, they're either shredded or burned if it's still company. And by burned, I mean melted, disintegrated, there's nothing left. If it's just cash or CTEC records, anything that doesn't have personal information, it's taken up to the transfer station and made up there for us.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Buck?
This is resolution 201456. Mr. Ballmer.
Yes.
Mrs. Smith.
Yes.
Mr. Jevon Angela.
Yes.
Mrs. Caldwell Craigner.
Yes.
Mr. Sephora.
Yes.
Mayor Wolpert.
Yes.
The last item on the agenda comes under the police department. It is a resolution. It's entitled amending on a temporary basis, chapter 256, section 25619, loading and unloading for space number 42 adjacent to the National Church Residences, Laurel Highlands Village. And whereas by ordinance number 2009-2, provides for the use of parking spaces designated by the city as space number 42 on the northerly side of Wellness Street, providing the property of National Church Residences as a drop-off loading zone with restricted parking for no greater than 10 minutes. Whereas the council desires to amend this provision on a temporary basis to be later made permitted by ordinance to increase the time limit from 10 minutes to 30 minutes. Now therefore be resolved, section one, that the council of the city of LeChaux hereby amend section two of ordinance 2009-2 to provide that restricted parking for loading and unloading in space number 42 shall be increased from 10 minutes to 30 minutes. Section two, that the mayor, city manager, city secretary, and any other proper city officer are authorized and directed to sign any and all documents and take any and all action necessary carry into effect this resolution. Section three of the resolution shall take effect immediately. In section four, that any and all other provisions of chapter 256 not amended or repealed shall remain in full force and effect. The proper motion would be to adopt the resolution as outlined.
May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion?
Yeah, why can't we just take all this parking meters off of that area there?
I don't know.
What have we got to do to do that?
Amend the ordinance.
Well-
You just talked about parking revenue and now you're going to take one.
What are you talking about? That whole?
Well, there's what?
Three parking spaces?
By National Church Residences.
It does make it for loading and unloading. I'll know.
They're just the ones in front of the NCR.
Yeah.
Let's give this a try and see how it works. And then we can revisit that. I mean, we can't do that now with this ordinance anyways. I guess we could, but we'd have to amend this ordinance. Let's give them their 30 minutes now and then we can revisit that. Talk to Joe and see what he thinks about that.
And that's not for the residents. The residents there either have passes for the backlog or the parking garage, so that would just be for visitors. And I frequent that place and there are some people that park there that don't go into that NCR building and go down the town, which is okay. That's okay. They pay for parking. Go somewhere else. I think it's-
Were you talking about using that whole spot for unloading? I don't know. The whole, no, those three spots.
Yeah, that's right.
Four, maybe?
It's right up from the parking garage. It's barely used.
Okay, Derek, I mean, how about we have next agenda being having to figure how much we make a month there?
I don't think we have it broken down that clearly by meter. Yeah, by street?
Uh, it might be.
Okay, let's-
It's all that street money gives in altogether, but I can't see.
At this point, I'm not in favor of doing anything until we have a better handle on how much. We got a parking garage to pay for. Yeah. Right. Okay, well, we have a motion and a second on this item. So are there any other questions?
Just like, if you could, ask each other, see what kind of numbers they come up with.
Any other questions? Ms. Buck?
This is resolution 201457. Mrs. Caldwell Craigner.
Yes.
Mr. Jevon Angela.
Yes.
Mr. Ballmer.
Yes.
Don't take anyone else's boat.
Mrs. Smith.
Madeline, don't.
I can't talk like a child. I was going to go like them. Yes.
Mr. Sephora.
Yes.
Mayor Wolpert.
Yes.
The man is really tipping on you.
It's not harassment, sexual harassment. Do we have any unfinished business anyone wants to discuss?
I do.
Okay.
The down parking light at Chabane and Leggins, what is the status of the?
I talked to Joe about that. He's waiting on a pole.
A pole or a park?
A pole, a pole for the light. Apparently it's, it's being manufactured and then he's waiting on it to be made up for it.
Did we ever catch the person responsible for doing that? Yeah, I think they, somebody saw the truck and they call the trucking company.
And they're paying for it?
I don't know if they are. I assume if they follow.
They do have to be on the back of, of one of them.
Yeah, let's see if we can have them pay for it.
Anybody in the audience know?
Well, we can pay for it and they can reimburse us.
They didn't find him yet.
Oh, they didn't find him?
They didn't find him.
There's a photograph that's trying to be developed with the name on the truck. Other than that, we have nothing.
Thank you very much, Sergeant.
Are we seeing?
That's how rumors get started. Any unfinished business? Excuse myself?
I will, I will. I'm going to do that after, I'm going to do that after the minute before.
Okay. Any other unfinished business? Any new business? Okay. Now, citizen's request, open forum, anything on your mind? Let's hear it. Go to the microphone, give us your name and address.
On the 2006 information that we're going to be burning or throwing away, I would imagine that the cost, the time that's taking our people to go through this to see if there's any social security numbers or anything on there is pretty extensive. And I think that the cost for that would be prohibitive, so why just don't we burn it all?
The only thing that there is the social security numbers on the payroll record is that one box. All the other things are just cash receipts. We know what, we know what documents are in the boxes.
Okay. Another thing on the, on the sign that they're going to put up, you said it would be about eight feet? With the possible kids tearing into the sign or something like that, maybe we should consider putting it up a little bit higher?
Well, they suggested the height, I mentioned it was seven feet or whatever. It's pretty high. I mean, that's kind of hard to reach. That's the bottom of the sign. They're pretty indestructible, so.
Okay. Also, at the last meeting, it was, we made, a motion was made to accept Greg Fenton on the water authority.
Neil Fenton.
I'm sorry, Neil Fenton. For his qualifications and that, I think that in January, when we bring up some names, I think he should be brought up again. I know that if somebody lived in Unity Township and maybe wanted to join the Lakewood Fire Department, I think they would probably welcome him if he was trained and things like that. So I think that Greg's, or Neil's name should be brought up again. Also, I'd like to know what the, what the situation is with the union contract? If we have a negotiator or?
We'll discuss that through the city manager before I bring it up.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we need to be very conscious about the, any possible increases. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Sir?
I have, I guess, a concern.
Your name, please.
Sam Whitrow. I live at 221 Spring Street and I park in the, I'm a resident. I moved here two years ago. I'll try to make it brief. When I moved, obviously a resident is a blue parking pass, which is what I use. Which I didn't know was where you were allowed to park, you're only allowed to park in the yellow. You're not allowed to park in the orange, which is I guess short-term parking, which you learn. So I bought my, I bought my parking pass September 25th. Okay, so I parked for the rest of the week. September 30th, I come out of the parking garage, into the parking garage and the meter maid is going back and forth with my truck and I looked at her and I started over to her. She said, is this your truck? And I said, yes. She says, well, you know, your parking pass is no good. And I said, well, yes, it is. I said, it's, I got it, it's for October. She said, you're not allowed to put it out to October. And she goes, I have to write you a ticket. And I said, you're kidding me. I said, it's 20 to 4 and she's going to write me a ticket for having my parking pass out early? For one thing, when you trade in, when you get your parking pass, they take your old- Okay, so I had no September. I had October. And it was out since the 25th. And for me to talk to her, she was very unprofessional. If I heard whatever from her, you know, I'm not a public speaker and I'm a little bit nervous. You know, I tried to reason with her a little bit and she just said, you know, whatever about four or five times. And it really bothered me and irritated me. So I realized I wasn't going to get anywhere with her. So I said, you just go ahead and write your ticket. And I said, I'm just going to go complain. And she said, whatever. So then she, I came down here and she followed me and, you know, and she said the same thing. There has to be, you know, some kind of leeway, you know, parking. My goodness, I am a resident, I'm blue. Obviously, it's going to be for October. You know, and I got a-
Did you have one for September? I'm just curious.
Yes, I did.
And you're saying when you came down here to buy October's, they took September's?
Yes, they took September. And the reason I got it that day was I was going away and I was going to be gone for a few days and I wanted to make sure I had my pass. And I have to stop. But I'm not going to go to the magistrate and have to take a day off of work.
Well, did you pay the ticket?